I would thank you for the night, thank you for the here, thank you for the strength. We're going to this town council meeting, we have some leaders and guys that direct us in the right path concerning citizens on the Bronx. Have you been in the citizens in this brief tonight? Would you stand with me, amen?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. We'll start off with road call. Robinson's in the back, Dennis is on second road. She's here, Sue is here, Tyler's here. Jason has had a situation come up with a family member and he was not going to be here tonight, so I'll say that. I'm here, Evanston's here, Sherri's is here, and Mr. Warren is over there on the Zoom machine tonight. That being said, I say... You're taking approval of the agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
The proper move is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote same, motion period. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the March 6, 2023 Town Council meeting.
Move approval of the minutes from the March 6 Town Council meeting?
Aye.
Again, the proper move is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote same, motion period. Next up is minutes from the March 30, 2023 Candidate Forum.
Move approval of the minutes from the March 30 Candidate Forum?
Aye.
Again, the proper move is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote same, motion period. Minutes for the Camden Board Meeting on April 4, 2023.
Move approval of the Camden Board Meeting on April 4?
Aye.
Again, the proper move is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote same, motion period. Last, I'll give you the minutes, April 7, 2023 Camden Board Meeting. It's been a busy one.
I move for the approval of the minutes on April 7 Camden Board Meeting.
Second.
Proper move is second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote same, motion period. Next up, let me just finish it and we will start off with the student... Honors thing for thing, you have none of them here tonight?
Just read the paper.
Just read the thing.
Middle School Student of the Month was Mr. Cameron Williams, nominated by Ms. Rebecca Hood. She wrote, Cameron is always respectful and attentive to his grades in class. He is a great leader, but I don't know that he realizes it yet. This guy has a bright future ahead of him. High School Student of the Month is Justin Cahoon, nominated by Mr. Kelly Barber. Kelly wrote, Justin not only taking his high school classes, but has enrolled in welding program at Central Florida and worked after hours after school and on weekends. Besides being a hard worker, he is one of the most respectful and courteous students that I have met this school year. He has not on campus for many class periods this year, but I didn't want him to be overlooked. He is a student that should be recognized.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Warren?
Yes?
We're getting some feedback from over your direction, I think, sir.
Is there a TV in the background or radio?
The only voice that I can hear clearly right now is yours, Sue. So if somebody has a question for me, please stress it to me. Where is the thing?
We're getting some feedback, or do you have a TV on or something in the background? All right, let's go. Whatever it was, it left. Okay, thank you. All right. Tyler, thank you for that, and we will get the things out to them as soon as we can get to them. Our informational items, Friday, April 28th, is a bread... Food Bank will be at the park again. That starts at 1:00. And if anybody's got any discussion, questions about it, I think everything has been going along pretty good. They promised us that they would be doing this on a monthly basis now. They were in Cleveland yesterday, um, we're gonna see just the double, that's right. So, um, definitely don't get here every month then. The new fire station, open house, is set for Saturday, April 29th, at 11:00 a.m. We'll have refreshments, and Dennis will give us a tour of the complex and show you what we have done with all that money. We got things to come, so it's, uh, it's a big improvement from what we're, what we have been doing, so we're looking forward to that, Dennis. Our next Town Council meeting will be Monday, May 1st. It's gonna be an odd, odd time because of the elections. We're gonna have meetings back, back to back, so tonight and tomorrow, and then next Monday.
And I forgot to mention on here, there's a public hearing on Mario Spadavici's RV park at 5:00.
Yes.
So 5:00 and 6:00 next week.
Bronson Beautiful, Beautiful Bronson Day Number 4 is set for Saturday, May 20th. Glad you asked me about that the other day. There you go. Uh, that's at 10:00 a.m. We will, that is going to be here. And we will start, is that gonna be at the library?
Well, we're doing, yeah, we're gonna be focusing on the library.
Focusing on the library, so it'd be an interesting meeting. And the Town of Bronson would like to welcome Kellyanne Wells as our new administrative assistant. For those of you who are not aware of this, Alexis has...
Left the building.
Left the building. He has decided he is going to further his education and he is going after his master's degree.
Masters in political science.
And political science. He was going after a doctor's degree and he, uh, so he's a smart kid, smart young man, I know that, and we wish him well. And again, we'd like to welcome Ms. Kellyanne. She is filling in for short term, and she will, is doing a good job on that.
So she administrative assistant, or is she either...
She's our part-time admin person, however, she's working full-time right now until our new full-time utility clerk starts next Monday.
Why, why we can't get these people at the house and so everybody knows we're here? What's the problem with that?
What do you mean?
Why, why this lady couldn't be here?
Do you mean at the council meeting?
Yeah.
I can ask her to be if you want. I mean, that's not normally something I've done in the past, but we can.
Do now, do now.
Sure, maybe tomorrow.
And last, on my agenda for tonight, is something that I have been wishing wouldn't happen, but it has happened, so we're gonna, we're gonna deal with that right now, okay? And it was with a great honor that I do this, and I got these proclamations I need to read, and we're gonna start with this one, which should have been done earlier. And, Ms. B, will you come up here, please? And I'm gonna read it, I'm gonna read it. Issued by the order of the Town of Bronson and the Town Council of the Town of Bronson, whereas Beatrice Roberts was elected to the Bronson Town Council in September of 2001.
To be elected?
To be exact.
And served on the Bronson Town Council until September of 2021. And whereas Beatrice Roberts initiated and/or had significant involvement in many aspects of Bronson's positive transformation over the last two decades, and whereas Beatrice Roberts stands today as an example of Bronson's best, most dedicated and most honorable elected officials serving our residents, now therefore it be resolved that I, Mayor Robert Barton, on behalf of the Bronson Town Council, do hereby honor and recognize Beatrice Roberts for her dedicated and distinguished service to the Town of Bronson as both Town Council and Mayor. Thank you so very much, and well deserved.
Oh, get picture too.
Oh, she's got her bronson shirt on.
Got it on. And this should have been done earlier.
Better late than never, though.
Yes.
You can blame her. Oh, there it is.
Get a hug, too. That's you.
He liked it so much, he wanted to keep it.
All right, Grandpa, come on up here. Proclamation, Town Bronson. The proclamation issued by order of the Town Council of the Town Bronson, whereas Aaron Emerson was elected to the Bronson Town Council on September 2001 and served on the Bronson Town Council until April of 2023. Whereas Aaron Emerson initiated and had significant involvement in many aspects of the Bronson positive transformation over the last two decades, and whereas Aaron Emerson stands today as an example of Bronson's best, most dedicated and most honorable elected officials serving our residents, now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Robert Barton, on behalf of the Bronson Town Council, do hereby honor and recognize Aaron Emerson for his dedicated, distinguished service to the Town of Bronson and the Town Council. I started with a long time, we have, uh, we have, uh, we have not agreed on everything, I'll truthfully say that, but we have one thing in common. It's always, it's always been, and I can always truthfully say this, hell, let you hold that. And it was for the better of the Bronx, so. Yeah, come on, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Fire! Come on!
Thank you, sir, very much. Well deserved.
Where's this $25 gift card? No money. Hilarious.
Okay. And I'm gonna do this, even though he is not here tonight to receive this, and I think y'all, everybody, go to hear that, health issue that happened to his mother-in-law. Proclamation issued by the order of the Town Council of the Town of Bronson, whereas Jason Hunt, on September of 2015, and served with elected to the Bronson Town Council until April of 2023, and whereas Jason Hunt initiated and had significant involvement in many aspects of Bronson's positive transformation over the last two decades, and whereas Jason Hunt stands today as an example of Bronson's best, most dedicated, and most honorable elected officials serving our residents, now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Robert Barton, on behalf of the Bronson Town Council, do hereby honor and recognize Jason Hunt for his dedication, distinguished service to the Town of Bronson as both a Town Council and a House Mayor. We will present this to him.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. With that being said, congratulations, Ms. B, Mr. Aaron, thank y'all. Personally, I have to tell you, Town of Bronson. All right. Miss Sue, turn it over to you.
I'm up. All right, got one resolution for tonight. It's Town of Bronson Resolution 23-10, the resolution approving the grant of avariance for oversized front fence for the property of Larry &amp; Son Inc. for parcel ID 0346200000. As you recall, he came before the council at the last meeting and asked for avariance to change or to put a front fence of eight feet instead of the four feet that we have in our LDRs, so this is the resolution for it.
All right, pleasure from council.
May I make a motion to accept Resolution 23-10?
Second. Proper move is second. Again, this is the first reading, correct, Sue?
Only.
This is only reason?
The resolution.
It's only reason, excuse me. Uh, all those in favor, any questions? Anybody have any discussion? That being said, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote same, motion period.
All right, next up is opening of the bids for the fire station roof replacement. As you'll recall, when we did this a month or two ago, we only got one bid, so we went back out to bid, and tonight we have three to open.
Last bid was $80,000.
The last bid was $76,000.
You ain't cutting this thing up.
Yeah, I don't wanna cut anything, so I'll give it to you.
Throw them away, you got the option.
This is all they trust me with for decisions at Town Hall, you know.
That's mine.
Ooh. Have it one? Yes, sorry. Two, and... Thank you very much. You got ten, though.
Huh?
You got two, right?
Two, what?
This is one, one.
Yeah. All right. That's for... Fire station, that's dog and cog.
All right, so you gotta add two with my...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the other one.
I think he's the only one that picked that like that.
So Charlie, yours are in two, right? So you've got 36...
One for the flat roof and one for the shingle roof.
Okay. So it's the total of the two?
Yes, ma'am, you would add the two together.
Got it.
Thirty-six, nine, plus what? Twelve?
Twelve, eight.
Okay, so it is at 49.7.
Forty-nine, seven.
Just show it.
I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
The number on the front is for half of it or...
No, that's the whole thing.
It says half down.
This one is about, correct? Yeah. This one's about, this one's 55, so.
Man, they were all possible, aren't they?
What's that?
So, so you're, the dark is going to say one's too hot, but this is either or?
Yeah, that's one, the front one's for shingle, that's metal on the whole fire station. You could put metal on that, that roof.
So we either, it's either this or, one or this.
Yeah.
And what's trying to make sense?
Forty-nine.
I mean, that wouldn't be bad. You know what I mean?
Let's see this. Is it shingles, isn't it?
Um, I think so.
Which is shingle?
I didn't want to go close, so I'm...
Y'all will do, y'all will do metal. Y'all will do metal.
Yes, we do. I don't really see the advantages of it. I think the shingles will last you as long as what you're gonna leave this building here for. I hate where you spend a bunch of extra money and maybe tear that part down one day.
But if you have a hundred years, I already found one of your metal, honey. I wish, I wish it would give a bit, uh, a book on it, because me, myself, first I have to tell you, I do shingles, of course.
Most of the shingles got, what, like a 20-year thing on me nowadays?
They, they call it a limited lifetime, and they consider a lifetime 50 years, 50. So what happens is, is after about year 15, they start getting pro-raised like a higher or a battery. So no ones on Town Hall have been on there almost 20 years, probably 15 anyway. Whenever they moved the building over there, I'd done that roof. Mr. Aaron, the reason why I didn't do the metals because you can't go over that roof that's there now because there's so much bad wood. You really wouldn't be saving anything if y'all were gonna take the cheapest bid, so I want the shingles to, to be in the ballpark. Where, where you save the metal is being able to go over the existing roof with one-by-fours, but that roof's too bad to do that. That, that's gonna take a little bit of woodwork to get that out. Yeah, so where the fire truck at? This part here on the flat roof, there ain't nothing you can do with this except what I quoted you, putting a tapered insulation system on it to get positive drainage. In the center of this roof, I think it's gonna be around seven inches thick, and it's gonna taper down to zero, so you'll have a little bit of slope for the water to run off. Right now, it's dead flat, and it holds water. So the paper system, there's a diagram on the paperwork that I gave you that shows you, it's built up in the center, and there's arrows running down to the, to the end.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
All right. What are you doing in the council?
I'd rather pay the extra $2,000 to somebody local than I paying. Pay the 49.7 instead of 47.
Aaron, you got anything?
Okay, I see you have to do, got to pay, probably $90 sheet?
Yes, that's labor and material, that's $90 sheet installed.
Okay, then you go here, two if we need it, two, three. That what you said, right?
Yes. That's the only thing that's hidden in the price is the woodwork, because there's some of it that we notice bad, and there's some of it that's gonna be bad that we can't see until we get the roof all.
I need a motion, which one you want to do?
So Charlie, you think if we, is it with you, the roof would last for at least 20 years, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. They're both roofs that last 20-plus years. I put this roof back on an O4 or O5.
Okay.
And this is only a two ply.
Okay.
The roof that I'm quoting is a three ply, which is a 20-year NDL system.
Okay.
So, uh, it's an extra ply, so it's either gonna be more plus to the slope for the positive drainage.
Okay. So you did this roof, these roofs?
Ma'am.
You did these roofs?
Yes, ma'am.
These whole roofs, okay.
I'm gonna break this up to y'all in the kitchen, on the preparatory work, the ones to bear together, $5 per sheet difference in, uh, price replacement. And just like Charlie said, we're going to need, we know there's gonna be some down here. We just don't know how much. So, we can take into consideration. Do you have any scope of idea how much we might have to replace down there?
Mr. Roberts, if I had to guess, I'd probably say 15 to 20 sheets right off the top of my head.
Thank you, one more question. You got nine-dollar a sheet, labor and everything. That's not included in the bid.
I'm sorry, Mr. Aaron.
Is that included in the bid? The nine-dollar a sheet?
That's, that's the price.
That's, 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 that's just in case you, it's not included in the bid.
Yes, that's not included. That's extra.
That's extra.
Because it's extra because I don't really know what it is. I'm not gonna say that there's only gonna be fifteen sheets and there's twenty and then I gotta eat that five.
Andrew Gibson is, uh...
Two free sheets.
Yep, well, two free sheets, but then if you run these fifteen and twenty sheets, then that ninety dollars gonna kick in.
That's right.
They gonna make the price higher.
Yes. And I'm sure everybody else, everybody's saying.
I'll acknowledge that.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
He giving the first two for free to others?
Well, you know.
No way.
Here, you can put, I, jury of the names of the companies and they did. We have three companies. We have Rogers Roofing Corporation.
Ken, I didn't hear that.
We have Rogers Roofing.
Out of Genelar.
They are out of, they're out of fraud. We have Match Metal Roofing, what's their business? And we're prepared out of town for zero tickets. So the shingle roof is forty-seven thousand. You have to, he has, they have to fly with it, he has to do it for ninety-five dollars a sheet. That's extra for this. Uh, Match Metal and Roofing out of Chieftain was sixty thousand dollars. So then it was a high figure, we took it out and started off. And then Charlie is Gainesville Roofing, now a company out of Rock, Kentucky. And his bid was thirty-six-nine for the doggy car. And...
It's not in there. They didn't get put in ours, twelve.
And twelve thousand eight hundred for the, for the W.
No, that's in mine.
He got it, I didn't get it.
Yeah, we got the second page.
I got, it's at the very end, I didn't see it.
Rogers, if I'm looking at it correctly, Rogers' bid is not saying anything about bumping it up? Like what he's saying on the flat part, which is the main problem we have in price?
Yes ma'am.
I don't see that with Rogers. So, do you think he has to do that?
He does do.
Okay. So I'm asking, what's he gonna do with the...
Just a second. Daniel Roofing.
What's he gonna do with Daniel Roofing?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion on the table. We go with Gainesville Roofing.
Second.
Company. We have a second, all those papers, six of five, six of nine. Alright, so these same motion carries. Rogers, take the roof, bud.
And it's good that actually have someone in town when something goes wrong to come back out.
I'll be with that. I'll be with that, but I feel like I'm getting checked on. I don't even see my comeback, if I come in there, if I come back, I'm gonna be in your...
Alright.
Hey, Attorney Warren. Can you mute your microphone? We're getting a lot of feedback. It sounds like you're in a zoo.
He can't hear you.
Attorney Warren.
Yes?
Can you mute your, can you mute your microphone? We're getting a lot of feedback. It sounds like you've got birds in the background.
There are any birds here, but I'll see what I can do.
Oh.
Tell me if this helps. Can it help?
Yes, yeah, that took it out. Alright.
Alright, Captain, what is the question?
Oh, that was it. That was the question. Okay. That was it. I know, breathing. Okay, next up is a lease agreement with Dex Imaging. This is regarding our Canon C3525i Series 3 multi-function color printer at Town Hall. So it is currently on a five-year lease, which expires, due to renew, next month. He gave us two different options in your packet. We really need to look at the first one because we need to be able to do eleven-by-seventeen paper, which the first one will do, the second one will not. But I did bring that to Dennis's attention in the event that he's interested in stuff to think for the new fire station. So we have the option of doing a thirty-six month or a sixty-month lease. Again, right now we're on a sixty-month. And price-wise, it's pretty much the same as what we're paying right now. We pay that per month. It includes, you know, maintenance. The only thing we have to pay on top of that is a per, per sheet, whatever we use, right?
Yeah, we pay a total, a reading rate, which is normal. Or what else, Agent? A reading rate, where if you go over a normal, what you normally do, in a month they charge you. But all the companies charge it.
It's down at the bottom. The usage rate is point oh, oh-one, oh-six-oh for mono and point oh-six, oh-five-oh for color. So, like I said, it's comparable to what we're paying now. We just found it to...
Then you said the first one?
The first one, correct. Because it does eleven-by-seventeen, which we need to do for permits and things like that. And the photocopier is pretty much the exact same thing as what we have now, which works fine, what we do.
It's the only company that we've ever used before?
Yeah, same company. The same company, just they're gonna bring a new, they take the old one away and they give us a brand new one.
I know, I'm saying, so is it the only company that we've... Yeah. And the thing is, is that with Canon, I was helping to beg on, because we're a state municipality and government, if something happens to ours, they have to replace it within twenty-four hours.
So that we're not down?
State contract, I mean, from what we're saying here.
It is, it's on state, statehood.
First one's what we need, the first one's what we need to get.
Yeah, and I just recommend doing the sixty months like we have now.
Sixty months?
Yeah, that's fine.
What, you're gonna say a motion?
I make a motion to accept the lease agreement from Dex Imaging for the sixty months for the new printer.
At the, at the one-oh-two eighty-nine a month?
One-oh-two eighty-nine a month.
Perfect.
We have a motion in a second, in discussion. All those papers, six of five, six of nine. Alright, so same motion carries. Should we get second one, thanks?
It's the same thing as ours, it's just it doesn't do eleven-by-seventeen. Right.
Alright, Curtis, come up here and talk to us, buddy. We don't have the prices.
Um, please, the council. The first Virginia's quote was grinder pumps. I know some TNC like a lot, but last week, we had to replace four.
Are you saying not with the way they go down?
And we already did five as part of our ARPA money in the past.
Right. So since we have an ARPA, we need to go ahead and get the grinder pumps that happen here. We now, currently, we have thirteen grinder pump stations with two pumps in each station. That's a total of twenty-six pumps. So the chances of some of them going out, it's pretty much possible that some were gonna go out. The life expectancy has been over for guaranteed warranty by the pump. They only have a year. And so, they could maybe be on years five or six. So, we really need to get those.
What's the total life expectancy though, Curtis? Like how, do you think they last five years, ten years?
Grinder pumps.
Depends on how much stuff goes through them.
I mean, if it's on Stevens Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, for those, because they use, you know, they serve as a, as a system, so they're only uses. At each home. There's something that we need to have when we need, most of our grinder stations, they have two pumps, like I said, within, in the wet wells. So one go out, they can function off one, but if both go out, then whether it's a business or... And most of our grinder pumps are on the cord of twenty-seven, so keep, keep, keep waste moving. And also, you're probably gonna be seeing that, you're getting some quotes on the hoses for the grinder pumps and check valves. What's happening with the grinder pumps inside the wet wells, they didn't use, they used stainless steel. And with all the gases, it's causing erosion. And we're gonna run into a problem pretty soon where all the brackets are gonna rust, the screws are rusting. So there's gonna be an issue sometimes in the future, in the near future with those.
Why did they, did they, the stand stills, was it cheaper or why were they...
Probably so.
Did you switch over the brass? Did you switch it over to brass?
Uh, probably, at some point, probably need to. And that's what happened with a lot of check valves, the hose connection, because of the gases and the waste, it just, it's rusting. Check valve will fall it off because of the waste.
Alright, entertain the motion.
Can we talk about these, Aubrey? He just wrote it.
Yeah, he just had to get a quote.
I made the motion, we accept a quote for the Tang grinder pump from Hydro, thirty-two.
Second, pardon me, move to second, all those papers, six of nine. Move same motion carries.
Next thing on my list is the two thousand eight Ford F-150, the gold truck. I'm in the process of getting two of the mechanics to look at it. I had one shop look at it and they think the motor's gone. I'm having two more mechanics look into it. I should be able to get back and give you more depth answer on just what's going on with the truck. But the first proposal I got is that the engine's gone, like I said, I have a quote for the engine. It's one of six thousand, no, eight thousand. And that's not including the other things for the star or spark plugs, fuel injection, all those things.
This checks for the parts, so that doesn't include your labor and all those stuff, right?
Nah, that quote will be, putting it in.
Yeah, it says installed.
We're gonna get a new truck.
Is that?
So wait.
That's another discussion in itself, right there. That's a fifteen-year-old truck.
You got two, you got, you got that little flat bed in that truck? Some trucks need to go. And you keep on putting money, I mean, not, this is serious. Personal, it'll be seven different, not the last, but anyway. For the city, you know, that old, that, uh...
Right.
We still got it.
I've been trying to...
You know, like Russell truck is probably on this.
You already put it out and it's what?
They already determined, so they're gonna put even more money into...
Hundred fifty? Well, we've already committed to the one time, which is like sixty grand. We just decided we don't have it on order.
Will it be worth it to put this one in?
I wanna get the second, third opinion to see what's wrong with it.
You need to put the doors, the motor not going, that's not hard, that's not hard to determine. It shouldn't be...
And like you say, like, here and say, is that, it is, it is, or it isn't one of the other. It had none of the signs of the motor being gone earlier.
And I would...
So...
I wanna get those other, let me get those other two second and third opinions and then we'll be able to move forward.
When the motor go, it go, it's gonna knock, smoke?
That's what.
I'll get one of the oil?
It ain't had none of that, ain't had no smoke, water, and oil, and oil and water, it ain't have nothing.
I don't mind if I want it knocked.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand?
No, it's more than that. Yeah.
No, that truck will have over a hundred thousand.
Really?
It don't go nowhere.
In fifteen...
It don't go nowhere, that's what I'm saying. I looked at it for about twenty minutes and I ain't find no sign of no motor blowing.
You need to get the second, third, and the fourth opinion.
Everybody want to get the second, third opinion. To guarantee why they didn't have more depth.
There is an issue that Ford had that sounded like the motors would be knocking and coming apart. It was actually about the timing chain guides that made a lot.
It's not even knocking.
About anywhere seventy-five to over a thousand miles.
It ain't, this one ain't even knocking. These, that, that F-150 motor is known for the thermostats going out and for water pump failure, so...
What it, what it doing?
Uh, running hot. Yeah, but I didn't get it.
It might be the water pump, yeah.
That's why they, that's why it's going to the second and third opinion.
Yep, yep. That's, that's it. But I wanna get it, the second, the third, on the truck for move forward. Yeah. And I got into the word that, you know...
But then you get a, there's a little head jack that you're gonna cost you just about as much to, depending the way you take it, you have to get a head jack to put it in the woods.
Yeah.
That's what it is. So I got one thing I need to ask before you finish.
Yes.
Uh, I got a call, one of my people called me in my last night.
I put it in there, I'm like, man!
Over there, well, uh, where they're putting the house in there, on Main Street.
Okay.
Okay, they said the road's been cut.
Yeah.
I went over there to look at that.
Yes.
Before I came right there. Was that authorized?
No, they already did. I went over there to talk with them and because of the heavy equipment that they bringing in, when they pave their road, it goes in, they're gonna repatch it.
Okay.
That's true.
Now, those, those, uh, I think your water come off there.
Yeah, they're gonna be, they're gonna be lower. I already asked them about that, was they gonna leave them at that height, especially the ones right by the road.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was talking, asking about that, was that road, so somebody probably needs to put, I was on a date.
That's gonna be, that's the main shut-off there that controls the water going up to...
But some probably need that one closer to road, some probably need to put down.
I actually asked them about locals, it's gotta be lower.
Yeah, they probably gotta, I'm just saying that meanwhile, it needs to be something full around where nobody will hit. What I'm saying.
I explained that to them.
Okay. Uh, that's my last, uh... Yeah, okay, thank you. I told them I would reach it tonight, I got it.
Alright, this.
Hundred, it's in the package.
I know, I know what it is now, what was it?
Oh, one-twenty.
Okay. I only got one thing. The funding for the fire engine from USDA, they cut them drastically according to the letter that we received from USDA. And we're only gonna get a hundred thousand instead of a hundred and twenty thousand for this new truck. So, that's the only difference. I'll still take hundred thousand. Right. I'm sorry, you're up.
This is coming to a party?
No, no, this is what they're giving us.
She said the rest of it.
The rest of twenty?
Yeah, the rest is coming out, coming out of ours. Originally, it also was gonna come out of ours. We applied for the USDA and we originally got, the last meeting, we had a hundred and twenty thousand, but USDA's funds have got drastically changed. So they're only gonna get a hundred thousand instead of a hundred and twenty thousand.
That's the one that you were expecting.
Oh, yes, a hundred thousand more, I'm hoping.
No, originally, we're getting nothing until we applied, so...
Okay. Also, I got an email saying that our engine is actually at the plant. I got pictures, I want to see it, it's not completed, of course. We're looking at the first or second week of July to get delivery of that truck.
Thank you, sir. Alright, Mr. Warren, you got anything?
Nothing yet, sir.
Alright.
When I can hear now.
Alright, here's the address. Nope. Alright, uh... Well, I need to get the new truck, get that through. Okay, yes. Alright. We have orders for the truck. General Motors on the state bid. Understand that on the state bid, you have to go to just one location to get that for the region. Ours is in Jacksonville, I think that's right, correct? Okay, uh, believe it or not, this is where we're living at today. We put in the order last year. They called us up in, when was it? It was in the ball, the year, I think, or...
Yeah, a couple months ago.
Around Christmas time, someone on there, and told us they, they're sorry to inform us, but we are not gonna get our truck. Uh, because of the components to make that truck, they did not have. This is not, this is General Motors. Uh, I have no answer to that. They put us, they're gonna put us back on the list to get that truck. Uh, we are especially the first one to go on, or one of the first.
Amen.
The difference between, like, me going over here and buying one at Ford or Chevrolet Place is unbelievable. 20, 30,000 off, if I remember, so, it's, it's, it's well worth waiting to get one through the state bid, um...
They, they call it, they shut down their order banks for government, basically, so we're all in the same boat, nobody can order one on a state bid right now.
Right.
Until they open it back up.
And, and, truth is, you know, where they're making, where they're selling, the high dollars, that same truck that we, that Curtis has drive, Curtis, how much for that?
42, 43, 43, something like 43,000.
That same truck is 70,000 off. So, uh, you know, it's, it's definitely worth waiting to see if we can get it, and I, I wish, I wish I could say, I think it's gonna happen, so we don't have to wait, okay?
This is a regular pickup truck that you drive.
No, this is the tool.
We got two brand-new trucks, this is a new, this is a big.
With the utility bin, work truck.
This is a real work truck, it's huge. And they can also pull, they can pull trailers, we do, they have to, something heavy.
Oh, this is good, that truck, though.
And then, of course, we're going to have the, we're getting the one-ton truck that we're sitting up here, uh, we're getting it, the flatbed on it, and that's, that'll be here for, we're waiting, again, we're waiting on the curbs.
Yeah, we want to come with it.
Yeah, it's running good. We're waiting on the, the trouble, but...
Okay, if you're doing that, then, this, uh, truck that you need, that's called 6,000 miles a fix, I mean, you can maybe figure out something else about that.
Well, that's possible, too.
I mean, if you're gonna have an active truck, it's like, if you're gonna be out by the seat, but you're not gonna be out of the truck, and you can also set a truck, that's gonna have a flatbed on it, somebody can drive it.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I know, but anyway.
So, what, what truck couldn't you get the components for? Martin, what truck couldn't you get the components, parts for? You said there was a truck you couldn't get the components, parts?
The one we had on state bid, yes. We already approved the purchase of it, one ton.
Oh, one ton?
Yeah.
That's not fire truck.
No, 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 this is just for us, it'd be a service truck, and we got the toolboxes on and all kinds of stuff. So, uh, like I say, it'll be here when it gets here. The update, uh, today, uh, our new tractor will be here, there we go again, we're, there, we are waiting on paperwork from the corporation to send that here to say, yes, you can sell that tractor on state bid. We've been waiting on it for two weeks now. The tractor's sitting over there right now, ready to get it, it's sending the paperwork, probably sitting on somebody's desk somewhere, it's on vacation, but it gets, that's the thing. So, as soon as it gets here, that'll be it. The, uh, the excavator that we've ordered, it will be here the first of May, I think, that's what they told me, correct, Curtis? And the trailer, just seven, that's probably about a few weeks out. Just a second, there's a lot of stuff going on around here right now, we could, we catching ourselves, coming to go on all this.
Anyhow, uh, I have a list here, yeah, of achievements that I was gonna read tonight, that, that thing, that thing that we've accomplished, wow, this, this year and stuff, that, you know, what's been going on, but, per Mr. Madison's request, I'm not gonna read it because it would take me all day to do it, so, all this stuff, yeah.
I spent all that time today.
All this stuff here, I want to just hit the highlights, all right, here's some of the highlights. Uh, ARPA funds, this is just some of the stuff that we've gone through this year, we're working on. 574,480, what we spent that on is, uh, well pumps, uh, trucks, trailers, utility tractors, excavators, employee appreciation stuff, ministry. Uh, we've had two elections, uh, we've adopted 11 new orders. We've, uh, this thing goes on and on and on, and Curtis, Curtis also worked on something here, and it was, uh, we've, uh, we purchased a lift trailer, that's so he can work and change out these motors and stuff that we're talking about. And it, it's working perfect, it's, it's just changed everything. So, uh, we've, uh, we've, we've ordered new bush neck trailers, where we haul the bridge and stuff like that. Um, and we've, uh, we've put the 350 together that was designated from, from the public work situation for the fire pump. Uh, we've increased our sewer supply tremendously, grinder pumps, floats, third pump, lowers, salt plant, ordered new, 10 new grinder pumps, just like we would begin, we would begin, hoses, all that stuff, the water, very important. The new pumps are up and running. We are waiting to make some changes, not changes, a few adjustments, and those adjustments are to where they can take samples. The samples have been ready, Curtis, everything is good to go. Uh, we have went from pumping, I won't let you do it, tell us this.
Combined, it was probably pumping maybe 500, 555, 70,000, but it's now, you can pump over 800,000.
Just, so, that has made a tremendous amount of difference there. We've, uh, restocked ourselves with, uh, supplies to be able to work, and, and where we can, we can work on 80-inch, 6-inch, 2'4", all this stuff, the cupboards and everything, we spent about $4,000 on fast cap saddles, purchased a small pump, water leaks, increased tools for preparing our water leaks, purchased a new air compressor, new bow saw, new chainsaws, three new hand-held lowers, three new weed eaters, new battery chargers, and jump chargers. That's just a few. And I got a whole list over here of other things that we have been, and like I say, there's, uh, there's one, two, three, four racks that, that we put through, and to update y'all, I've been on the phone half the day today, with the first stage of our water cross for the thing that we were studying, that we were doing, has been approved by Swan River Water Management for the year. Uh, they have asked me to come to Lilo on the night from Bay. Uh, myself and Sue will probably go up there to that meeting. That is just a preliminary stepping stone, as the worst one is there.
Is this the one?
Yes.
Transporting water to City Key and all the...
This is just a study. This is just a study.
Oh, I thought y'all had...
This thing is up to, I had a man to tell me today from Tallahassee that this was up, could be up to a $400 million project.
Yeah, but for who?
For this whole area, this original thing. So, I mean, that's, that's exciting on what it will do for our future. I mean, it'll take care of our growth for, I don't know how many years. So, uh, this is a, a lot going on, so, so, with that being said, I will push. Mr. Harris, you got anything to say?
I don't think so.
None?
You can show it.
Your last official?
Yeah, I think, I'm thinking I'll put it there.
Your last official should be paying the bills.
So, you're aware, but, uh, I just, you know, I enjoy the ride, it's been good. You know, I don't know, I, I, I don't get into crime, and I got a sense of humor, and if it's that kind of business, you have to have one, if you don't, you'll be bald-headed and gray like me. So, business is business, it shows up here, but you gotta have a sense of humor when you do a business sometimes, so, keep stressing, all that kind of stuff, and I enjoyed this 20-some years I did with, with the city, and I hope I had some kind of impact on, uh, the city and the people in the city, because that's what my purpose was, not for my own personal gain and everything, I get, or just to take care of the people that's in the city, I've been here for 70-some years, and, you know, I've been up here for over 20, 20 years, so I, I enjoy this, this ride, and I'm gonna go from a horse to a donkey.
When you come back to this?
Other word, I'm gonna stop my ride.
You gonna come back to this, though?
No, uh, uh, I'm taking that, uh, then, uh, God told me, uh, Moses, when the children was outside, Paul, never eat it. Tony, Tony, he told him, they will never see Paul on Moses, he probably won't pass him any more time.
All right, all right.
I guess I said that, I'm close to doing that. Anyway, I enjoyed it.
I would like to say one thing, it has been a pleasure, because we've had a good time. Uh, we've, uh, and I, I'm gonna miss you and your humor and everything, and cutting the food, and, and, uh, but I wish you many, 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 many more years, and I will, and we appreciate you, and we'll go ask for, down the road, we may need some advice, just like this, being, getting advice from her all the time, we need, we need all the support we can get.
I'll, I'll go back to that one.
Thank you. So, so... Tom?
I'm good.
Mr. Harris, there are three, some things I want to ask you, what they were, can I do, I can do that now, right?
Yes.
What is ONSL?
It's the, um, the thing you guys use at the school, the text messaging notification, that's the parent company.
So, do we just start over with them, or is that...
I have to buy credits as they replenish. One call now, that's their parent company, ONSL is their parent company.
What's MT Costly LLC?
That is our building department. Safe Build, that's our, that's their parent company, MT Costly is their parent.
And Pat Garrett Enterprises, what does Pat Garrett do?
I don't know.
About to get my big, uh, brother.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, uh... Anything else, let's see, any other public, anybody from the audience need to say anything?
No, everything.
Yes, sir. Yes, I have a question. I'm here to talk to you, you saw about the proposal for the permit, you talked about it, you wanted to be a way in, or are we going progress with that?
We probably haven't had a whole lot of progress because we're in a state of flux with our previous building official being gone, and now we have a new person, um, so I will make sure it gets on his desk for Wednesday. Yeah, he, he, he's only been with us two weeks now, so...
I mean, if you want, I'd come one day to meet with him.
It's probably not a bad idea, to be honest with you, the better, the people that can come in front of him, probably the better. Um, he loves to ask questions, so, it's probably a good idea. If you can come like 9:00 on Wednesday?
Perfect.
That'd be perfect. Yeah, his name's Mike.
So, is this guy, what? Dave Greenbaum?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm probably gonna tell you guys, yeah. Yes, Dave Greenbaum, his last day was, I don't know, two weeks ago? Um, so we have a new interim building official, his name is Mike Stacks, so he's been with us for two weeks. He may end up being our permanent person, we're not sure.
And company is a different...
It's still through, right, still Safe Built, um, he's out of Crystal River, and if he ends up taking Dave's, um, route, Dave was Crystal River, Chief Lynn Bronson, and Williston, so it might work out for him since he's already in Crystal River, or Dave was in Newbury, so it was kind of a hike for him to go out to Crystal River, so, this guy said, when I talked to him last week, he was like, I kinda like this road, I might see if I can keep it. So he may end up being our permanent person, so, but yes.
So, right now, he's following the same previous schedule that...
He is, as much as possible, um, but we're also sort of in a flux because of Alexis being gone, so we're all sort of trying to figure out what we're doing with building permits, and that's why I say we're sort of in a flux right now, which is why it probably hasn't gotten onto his desk, so, like I said, I will make sure it does.
I'll let you have a just...
Yeah, I apologize, we're trying, right now, we're trying to keep our head above water at the moment, with so many new people and everything, but I will make sure, if you can come in on, I'll put it on his, to do it.
All right, make it one, we need to deal with...
One more thing.
I'll let you do that, okay? Saturday, open house for the fire station, 11:00, y'all come, please.
Let's go.
Better off it is?
Down the town.
And...
Yeah, very good.
I'm gonna start doing all that this week.
Well, I do.
I'm gonna start putting it all out there this week, tomorrow, probably.